Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Mary Lee?
Yes. Today is August ninth. It is primary election day. Our meeting has to be done at six o'clock or before. So, having said that, I am going to move item B under ordinances and resolutions after the city manager's report. So that will probably be the last item of business. That way we can, I want to make sure we get through everything that's on the agenda. Also, for citizen comments, it would be okay if anyone would want to talk about anything that we're going to discuss, probably specifically the item B. It's okay for you to do that, doing citizen comments. I am going to limit your talk to two minutes because we need to be done by six o'clock. So, and when we do get to the ordinance part of it, we will not be taking public comment. So, having said all that, welcome. And citizen comments, would anyone like to speak to the council at this time? And if you do, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Camille Spore. We live at 33302 470th Avenue Hancock, but we also own a home in Morris, 706 West Fifth Street. I guess, I watched the minutes, or I watched the meeting online, the June fourteenth. I guess, one thing that came to mind as I was watching it, seemed like, you know, we talked about the police are low numbers, and then boom, let's disband. It seemed like zero to sixty, just like that. It seemed like maybe there was something intermediate that could have been talked about. Also, what is the problem? Why don't we have police? Why do they not want to be here? I know the reasons. They didn't want to talk about them on a public meeting. I kind of get that. But I feel like the reasons for the disbandment are foundational to the decision. Let's see. Oh, another thing. Well, professionals, you know, we act like, right here, we it's so hard to get doctors to come here, professionals to come and practice here. Well, what are they going to think when, oh, Morris, the county seat, the biggest town in the county, doesn't have a police force? I'd say that's one more check against that decision of theirs. They'll opt for possibly another city that does have a police force. I think that could hurt us because we want our medical center. Oh, what about our kids at school? You know, for years we had a policeman or a police officer in school. And now are we going to have a police officer in school? Blaine said himself, the environment that we're in, police don't want to be policemen. Although I know in other towns, they do. What about our kids? Our kids are our most important thing. We need to protect them. And in the time of school shootings, we're not going to have a police force in town? That seems crazy to me. I guess, yeah, I feel like this is, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Maybe there's other things we can do. Well, there's always compromises to be made. It's not one, all or nothing. Let's try to compromise, make this work, see what we can do. What or who is the problem? Wayne just talked to an officer today that said Benson's got all the police they can want. People are happy to apply there. I have a friend whose hus- husband is a chief of police in Moose Lake. They have a great system going, which is good. There's a lot of bad stuff goes on up there. So I guess I hope that we can delay this signing of a contract with the county. That's, that's my hope. That's all.
Thank you. Camille. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Arnold. I live at 19756 490th Avenue, just north of town. Excuse me. Hello, everybody. The way I see it, we started having a police retention, hiring and retention problem at what point, a year ago? What do you want to tell me? Was it a year ago?
It's, it's really been-
It's been ongoing.
It's been ongoing for a long time.
Okay. Did it get bad like a year ago or six months ago?
No, it's gotten bad within the last couple of months.
Couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we had, like, just say three months ago, how many police officers did Morris have?
Six, seven, three months ago.
Okay. So that we lost-
Yeah, I know that we want to get into a question and answer.
Three or four in a month's time by June tenth. Okay. And does anybody want to offer why that might have been?
You know, we're-
We're not into the discussion.
We'll listen to, we'd rather listen to you and then we're not going to answer your questions.
Why is that, do you suppose?
You have two minutes. I'm sorry. And one of them's gone. So, if that's what you want, if you wanted to ask us one question-
Well, I just, yeah, I really do, but you know-
We have to be done by six o'clock. And I apologize, but that is this meeting, this particular meeting.
I understand that. Okay. How can the sheriff's department hire, what I heard, six more sheriffs quickly to be the police department when Morris can't? When the city is unable to hire and retain, how comes the county can? Hot question, since you're not going to answer my questions.
Good question.
Well, just, you know, really quickly, they have the ability to get people to apply for their job. They're a higher level of law enforcement. So they have applications out. They have, what, nine, nine applications already? The last time we took applications, we had two.
You know, that might be-
But they're a higher level of law enforcement.
And it might be due to a reputation the city has earned as an entity hiring policemen. I've worked as a professional all my life. I know that these things happen. So. Number three, what control will the city council have once you give your contractual work over to the sheriff's department? What input will the city have in that contract, even past contract date? Will they, will you people be able to give them guidance and tell them your new file needs that come up? Does anybody care if there's an input? Or is this just relinquishing?
I believe that discussion will come up with, when we're talking about the contract.
Okay, and hopefully before you sign it?
Before we vote on it, for sure.
And that's going to be tonight you vote on it?
That would be, yes.
Well, I will hope that you really, really take this serious before you vote to do something so, in such a reckless manner. There's been, as far as I know, I haven't, you know, any reason to believe that there's been a lot of research done or any recruiting, looking, looking into some recruiting methods to try to problem solve, why are we having this kind of a problem and where should we go? Okay, number four. Just touched on that a bit. I do think you need to delay any contractual agreements until you have done some research and some problem solving, asking some hard questions. Doesn't hurt to slow down, take your time, give yourself time to think and contemplate these things. Why wasn't every one homeowner in Morris sent a postcard with your intentions? Giving them time to, inviting them to come and give their opinions? This has just been blindsided. A city blindsided.
Okay. Can you wrap it up, Anne?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay. If the, well, first of all, I'd just like to ask Blaine a question. I've heard a rumor that you're resigning.
That has nothing to do with this meeting.
Yeah, we don't deal with rumors and I'm here, so.
Well, yes. I see that you're here.
All right. Thanks, thank you, Anne.
Well, I have one more thing. One thing I think that people should look at is if they get given an opportunity, that now that a large part of the city manager's job is going to be gone if you sign this contract with the county, should we be reevaluating the salary? And you should not sell all of the equipment from the police department for a dollar. A dollar, come on. Then if you ever, if this whole thing blows up in your face and you have to restart a police department, you're going to be way behind in the equipment department. Don't be too confident. Don't be too confident.
Thank you for your points, Anne.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Any, any, anyone else? All right. So, okay, go ahead.
Wayne Spore, Camille's husband, yes. I live in rural Hancock, but we do have a house in town where our daughter and grandchild live. Little concern from what I hear because, I mean, I can't figure out why you can't drive through Benson without meeting a cop, why we can't have cops. I see it happened in Hancock, sorry, Katie. Kid bone stop signs after school. They know there's no cop in town. Oh, the other traffic's got to look out a little more. That's my two main things. Do I think the sheriff's department could handle it? Yes, but then they're taking time away from rural areas where I live. I think there should be more time out there myself. And if they got the city of Morris to do yet, might make it worse. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Anything else? All right, and thank you for your putting up with me on a time limit. If you know me, if you know this council, we let people talk as much as they possibly can. We have to get done at six o'clock, so. We have a deadline. Okay, last call. Any, any other citizen comments? Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We have reading and approval of minutes from July twenty-sixth.
I'll move approval of the July twenty-sixth regular minute, meeting minutes.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the condensed version for the paper.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, the transit report, GAMM reports from the Legion and Hockey, was it Hockey or was it, yeah, Hockey Association? And Raffle License Report from Rusk Kinship. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? I have one point out on the Morris Transit Report. Year-to-date, 2022 is the same as the month, so it's, that is not correct. That was obvious, but. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Petitions, requests and communications, we have a liquor license transfer for old number one.
I'll move approval of the liquor license transfer for old number one.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Just one quick comment. We did receive the insurance information on that one that was pending.
Okay, great. Okay, anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution to participate in Mindot's Western Minnesota Contactless Payment Project.
Yeah, so this is a test project that Mindot wants us and our transit office to participate in and they're going to be trying technology out to be able to make it easier for people to make their payments without having to have cash in their hands or tickets. And so this is, there's no real financial obligation for us, other than we, we work with them to participate in this.
That's pretty cool that we were-
Yeah.
-selected for this.
Yeah, they, they like our transit system. So there is a resolution to allow us to participate in that.
Okay, I'll move approval of the resolution to participate in Mindot's Western Minnesota Contactless Payment Project.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Any idea as far as devices, as far as the electronic devices, will they be in buses or will they be handheld or will the drivers have?
I have no idea. I think there are going to be some kind of app that people can come in with their phones and then they'll be able to record it onto a system that keeps track of what the payment is.
Yeah, there'll have to be some, something in the bus, I would guess.
Yeah, just with the number of buses and curious, but if they're going to take care of it, we're figuring out a new system and helping, that sounds like they'll be footing any additional expense to take care of that, I would assume, so.
Yeah, good question. Anything else? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Mary Lee?
Yes. And city manager report.
We had a really good meeting, councilmember Gullikson and Waller's and I to talk about communications between the city manager's office and, and the city council. And we talked about a format for a performance evaluation. And actually, I reached out to the City County Managers Association to try to get some additional formats other than the one that we used before. But we'll continue to sit down and look at that and present something back to the city council. And then I'll just leave the rest for questions.
Any questions? Any comments? Okay, so we'll go back to the resolution. Approving a law enforcement services agreement with Stevens County. The contract that's in front of you, the biggest difference is on page seven and eight. Item G, liability, item G is extended a little bit and item H is added. That's correct?
Right. The attorney that was working with the city thought that it should be split out so it was clear exactly what was being asked in, in, in that paragraph with regards to insurance.
As I stated earlier, this would not have public comment. I expect that we will ask for comment from Sheriff Dingman at some times. You okay with that, Sheriff?
Sure.
Thank you. So, who wants to start? Questions? Comments?
I'd start. I have a few, maybe a few comments and maybe just to share a little bit with, a little bit what I heard about our citizens' comments and that, you know, we are, we are listening to the comments. We just weren't engaging in a conversation at that comment period of time. But I think that, I think we're all overlooking the fact, or maybe some, that we still are going to have officers working here. They're just going to be sheriff's deputies, not PDs. There's very prominent towns in Minnesota that have no police force. Monticello, you go through Monticello, you know how big that city is? They don't have a PD. They have a sheriff, they're, they're contracted with the sheriff's department. Ortonville, just went to the sheriff's department. This is not a new thing. This is, this is something that is happening all over the place. With respect to maybe why the officers aren't maybe coming here or maybe why Benson has so many more or, there's, there's just a lot of, could be a lot of reasons, yes. Maybe it could be, you know, poor reputation for the city if it had a lot of officers going through at a different time. I mean, I've sat in this council for just short of ten years and we've sworn in seventeen officers. That's a lot. That's a lot of officers. We had, we had a lot of experienced officers that took other positions in maybe, actually, a lot of our experienced officers from the PD over the, over the years have moved to the sheriff's department and are very, very well-trained PD officers. So we ended up with a lot of officers that were not well, you know, I shouldn't say well-trained, but just didn't have the experience. So I think that has a lot to do with it, too. I guess, I, I don't see that the sheriff's department is going to lose anything in the rural area. We're, according to what we've not agreed on, but what we've agreed in principle on, is there would be six officers added to their staff and one administrative officer. And that's pretty much what would take to patrol the city and keep the services exactly where they were previously. So I, I don't think that the city is, you know, we're, we're don't have, we're not losing law enforcement. They're just changing uniforms. We, as a city, won't be responsible to hire and keep a chief. We have now, within our city, we have a sheriff that runs everything. We don't have a police chief and a sheriff. In my opinion, that's, that was two people doing the same job. You know, I think that, I think that, I think it's going to be a little bit better in certain areas. I think they have a lot more experience and when they add that to it, it's, it's going to be a little bit better. You know, if, if, that, I mean, that's from my perspective. And so I, I don't really feel that we're not having a police presence. We will have a police presence.
But you're making a decision in desperation.
There, there's not any desperation in this decision.
It surely looks like from the public point of view.
Yeah. The public has had, you know, we've, we've discussed this in, what, three, three meetings now? So I mean, majority of the public's had plenty of time to do this. And I'll be honest with you, I've had one phone call.
Nobody knows about it.
Well, and then people don't listen to the radio and don't read the paper.
The postcard would have been nice.
Yeah. Well, you don't really send postcards out.
You could.
But that's, that's just part of all, all of this, so. I mean, everybody's going to have their own opinion on, on what they think this should be and how it is. I would just responding to some of your comments, just to make sure that, you know, that we are, I did listen to what you said and, and thought about it. And, and I do listen to what people do say, if they do call me, so.
We're looking at basically contracting for a set number of hours or fifteen thousand hours annually. So yes, we, we will have specific times for officers in Morris and it shouldn't pull anything from what's getting, going on in the county now. But as we've discussed with Sheriff Dingman and the county commissioners, the city of Morris is part of the county also. I mean, we pay county taxes and city taxes, so we're looking at working together. We're paying for part of that law enforcement to start with. So I guess we're, we're going to have a team of hopefully thirteen deputies and a sheriff to be able to work together when they need to go back and forth with things that are going on. That you'll have the sheriff's department and the city being able to work as a team together instead of two separate units. So hopefully it's more efficient, that you're answering to one person, a sheriff versus a sheriff and a chief, chief of police. So we're, we're hoping and thinking, but we'll find out as we move forward. You know, that's, but it's not the first city in Morris, our city in the state of Minnesota that's doing it. It's, we've done some research, we've looked, we've been meeting with the county, several meetings, several of us, several of the commissioners, and trying to take and blend together to, to make an educated decision. To sit and hold on to our equipment, I don't think makes sense. You know what happens to something that you go and leave in the garage or in a storage for the someday that you might use it. I mean, if it sits, it's not going to be used.
Is there a trial period on this contract?
How do you go and hire somebody for a trial period? If you make a commitment with somebody and they hire people, if you go apply for a job and they're going to tell you you're in for a trial period, I mean, if we can't get people-
Happens all the time.
If we can't, well, if we can't get people to apply with us and they can, yeah, where are the problems? We don't know all of that, but we have a pretty good idea that it's scattered around several different things, so.
Can I ask a question? Were there exit interviews now with the police that left?
With it being a union, there's a lot of things that we directly can't, Blaine and the chief of police have worked with them. But when it comes to union, there's a lot of things that we can't get into directly with them.
Thank you, but this is not a public discussion, please. Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? Cost savings, is there?
There is no cost savings. There is no cost savings. I, I guess I haven't looked at the exact numbers, if it's a net neutral, but it's close, close to that. As far as the equipment that is addressed in the contract, that is part of what goes into the dollar amount that we pay for those contracted hours. I think, and this is not something that has been rushed into, you know, as, as Brian said and, and Jeff said, that we've talked about this for a while and it's certainly been on all of our minds. I want, I want to address the, the question about delaying this vote. The problem with delaying this vote really hampers the county and the county sheriff's department. Because they can't hire new people if we don't do this contract, because they don't have the money. They, you know, they're already and have been for well over a month, taking some of the shifts. They're, they're already patrolling Morris. They're, they're already doing that. This contract takes that into account. I got to believe that because of that, their sheriff's department with their aid people or whatever it is are starting to get a little, stretched a little bit thin. And that, that hampers, more than anything, that hampers our sheriff's department. So, the subject about delaying this vote, doing something different, sorry. How do you shut that off? Okay, sorry about that. The, you know, the, it's really not on the table, the, the question about delaying the, the vote. I think, I think Jeff and Brian have answered the other notes that I have taken. Anything else from the council and then I want to call up the sheriff Dingman?
I just have, because I, I mean, I hear anger in your voices and it's the same anger that maybe some of us sitting here thought and you're wondering why you want to blame something, but we just can't. And it's like, here's what we have to do. We're down to two officers. You cannot build, you can't. If it's your, if you're, it is too hard to build a law enforcement with what we need in that short of time. We, I think sometimes we forget that we have a very competent sheriff's department here. And with they, with this contract saying they are hiring, going to be covering twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, the city of Morris with those extra officers they're hiring- the city of Morris with those extra officers they're hiring, that is, that to me makes it a non-issue that we're gonna have police presence here. It will just be from the sheriff's department versus our own police department. Our sheriff's department, if you look at the experience and the longevity there, why, why wouldn't we is what I wanna say? Why wouldn't we do that? We have top-notch sheriff's department, they have experience, they have, have experience in things that, that we as a public don't even know about because it's, it's investigations, it's all the stuff that goes on behind the scenes that we are not privy to here. You are not privy as a city, it is our, it is our law enforcement that knows that as well as our county attorney. Those are things that we don't even see that go on, that if you do not have that experience for those types of things, it is really, really hard to have a, a city that, that, you know, that you're worried about, that traffic tickets, that all will take place. I mean, in this contract, it says there will be law enforcement services twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week. And again, this is experienced law enforcement. This isn't ju, which has been very difficult for whatever reasons, we can all have our own, we can have reasons and we can wonder why, but the bottom line is we will have experienced law enforcement in our town in Morris as well as in our Stevens County area. So that's what I look at and I know it may seem rushed and I know people don't feel like they were told a lot. We, I don't know, I, and I fought hard about this and I ju, the delaying it would not help, it wouldn't help anybody. It's not gonna help us recruit more, it's not gonna help us, it's not gonna help the sheriff's department. So I just really feel that this is where we need to go with it and I'm very confident that it's gonna be okay. I mean, it will be okay, we're gonna have police presence. Police, whether we call them sheriff or police, we will have law enforcement presence. And that was the big bottom line for me, so I just really want people to just say it's gonna be okay.
Thank you. Anyone else, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of comments, of course. First of all, I'm gonna start out by saying I'm disappointed that we put an important resolution on the agenda on a night when we had a short meeting. Very disappointed about that. I'm gonna say that, this is the way I'm gonna begin. But I do wanna, I do wanna say, Brian and Jeff, thanks for digging into this and coming up with this contract. But for me to make a decision, I don't have enough information. I know you put a true value of our equipment at three hundred thousand dollars. Blaine, that was your true value and I, before I can make an informed decision, I wanna see an itemized list of the equipment that we're turning over to the county. I can't because I look, this, these are assets that belong to the taxpayers and I can in good faith make a decision to turn over that kind of money for a dollar and I won't do it.
There is, there is a list that's in your packet of the equipment that we're turning over that has the vehicles and
Guns, what I'm talking about is all the other equipment, the SWAT gear, the weapons, the night vision goggles, all those kinds of things, Blaine, there's a dollar figure on those. And you, you just can't give that stuff away because it is an asset that belongs to the taxpayers. And I'm not gonna sign off on it until I see a breakout of that equipment and those assets. The other concern I have is we keep talking about, this is all, it's, it's gonna be just brown uniforms instead of blue. My, the, the point I wanna really drive home and I hope everybody that's sitting at this table realizes, once we sign into contract with this, we, the city council, mayor, we will have no more input on how law enforcement happens in this town. And I think we as elected officials have responsibility to the taxpayers to see how law enforcement is conducted in this town. Once we sign this over to the county, we're done. And I just don't think as elected officials, that's, that doesn't feel well to me at all. And Jason, please don't take this as a reflection on your abilities as, as a sheriff and a leader. I have full confidence in you and I just wanna speak to, you know, Brian's point about, you know, we, we had seventeen officers and I, I understand that, that it went through this department for one reason or another. Six of those, of course, as we know, went to the county, five of those are still there. I did take the opportunity to make a few phone calls and talk to some of the area chiefs that were surrounding us. And I asked them that very question that I asked, how are your departments, how are you able to make it work when we can't? And they, it was very interesting, all the information that I got from the different chiefs. And I had one particular chief that said they're alive and well, they have seven officers, three part-time. And he said, there is some fundamental reasons why people aren't coming to Morris, but that's gonna be another discussion. But I, I, I do think that we moved hastily with this. And that's kinda echoed from the citizens that have been here, they kinda echoed that comment and this is a very important decision that we make because the decision we make tonight is gonna affect all of the area towns around us. Benson, Montevideo, all the departments that have departments, they feel threatened by our decision to disband this police force. Because if it can happen to us, it can happen to them. And that's the message that I was, that was communicated to me when I was talking to some of the other chiefs out there. So that's really my two cents worth. I just can't in good conscience vote to approve this and that's, I guess, that'll, that'll come up here shortly, I'm sure of it. That's all I have, Mayor.
I would like to just address too, the, I mean, the, the equipment for a dollar, I, I knew in our discussions with the county, I made it quite clear that that would obviously raise a question or two. And believe me, we had that discussion and I'm not in the business of giving away stuff free either. So it is, all of it has been, has been accounted for and it's been tagged a dollar amount, okay? And it is worked into the hourly rate. So if we would not give them all the equipment, there would be a separate hourly rate. If we give them all the equipment, that rate is reduced.
It's factored into the rate, I get that.
It's factored in the rate, I knew this would, I knew this would be an issue if we just put it out without explanation that we're giving them everything for a dollar. It does, without explanation, that does sound terrible. There's no doubt about it.
It sounds light to me, Brian, because I, without seeing the exact numbers and the itemized breakout, I mean, we just got a brand-new twenty-twenty-two vehicle and you all know what, sitting here, what we paid for that. That's over fifty grand just for that car alone.
And all that was taken in, I, I, you know, I, I know that you wanna see it, but I mean, as we did it, we took it all into consideration. Blaine had the numbers, had the values, we negotiated out and as to the question of a cost saving, yes, there is a cost saving. There is a cost savings to this.
How do you see that, Brian? I don't see it.
Yeah, there is, we, we don't have a chief, we don't have one other officer and another admin person. So the budgetary hit to this is gonna be, is gonna be less than what it is currently. So there is a cost savings to this.
To me, there's some costs in here that we aren't talking about, but they're, they're relatively small. I know we have some things like reimbursement to the county for employees' vacations and, and those kinda things and sick leave transferred and that sort of thing, you know, in the big picture, those are small things, but, you know, how many other things like that are we not talking about? But I just, I just, I can't make the decision without seeing a breakout, I just can't do it.
Well, just, just one note, we, we're talking about six law enforcement officers that the county needs to be able to service the city of Morris. And all the equipment that goes with them. So they need vehicles, they need guns, they need all, they need, you know, bulletproof vests, they need all that equipment that goes with them. So we're giving them all the equipment to be able to equip those six people. The dollar is simply, anybody that's done contracts before, you know that there's gotta be at least some value put into an agreement. So it's usually a dollar, that's the only reason why the dollar's in there. But in the absence of being able to give them all the equipment, then they're gonna have to buy brand-new equipment, they're gonna have to buy vehicles, they're gonna have to buy all the things that go with it. So, so that's, that's what the exchange is and that's what Brian's talking about as far as how we factored the dollar rate for this. So we're giving you all the equipment, you don't have to buy new equipment, so now they're gonna be in uniform, they're gonna be equipped, they're gonna be ready to go and including some very new vehicles.
One question I have for Brian or Jeff, either one of you can answer to this, how did you arrive at the fifteen thousand hours per year?
Six, six officers and one admin staff person.
How many hours, or was it like?
Two thousand eighty hours.
Yeah, you're forty hours.
Two thousand eighty hours a year.
Okay.
That's how that number came up.
Okay.
Right. And I mean, I guess when I'm looking at this too, in, in the matter of time, I'll keep it short. Whether or not we came to this, or people feel that we got this decision quickly because of, of losing the officers. I would make this decision to move to the sheriff's department whether or not we were low on officers or not. I have full faith in the county, I have full faith that we're gonna get the same law enforcement or better than we already have. I really would. If it, if it was brought to me that we could make a cost savings and this wasn't the scenario and it was just out there, I would have no problem at all moving away, saving money and going to the sheriff's department.
You don't have any problem at all?
I would, I would have none because
Control of law enforcement.
Well, what's, what's, my point is, what is the control? There is no control, the, the law enforcement is law enforcement. Sheriff Dingman is, is in control of law enforcement, you know, so I, I don't know where that control is. I, I feel very safe being with the sheriff's department in control, so. Now, I mean, I, I'm just saying that out loud because that's, it's, I don't think that we really rushed into things that fast.
You know, the worst thing about having an, a, a, a meeting that we are definitely short on time and we've got less than four minutes right now is the, under the guise of rushing into an agreement, that, that we are not doing that. What happens, Blaine, in one minute? What happens if we table this till next meeting? What happens to the Sheriff Dingman? What happens?
Then he's gotta put off hiring the people that he's already got lined up for interviews next week to hire. So he's got the ability, you know, that's one of the things that we talked about, does he have the ability to hire a force? Yes. Does he have a better ability than us? Yes. So he's waiting to hire the people that he needs to be able to do this, but he doesn't have the funding to be, and the county board still has to make a decision on this to approve it, because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna be taking on the responsibility.
Sheriff Dingman, you got anything to say in a minute?
Yeah, just in the interest of time, I'll, very quickly.
Thank you.
I'm elected as the sheriff by everyone in the county, including the citizens of Morris. So the people that live in Morris, I am part of their shit. And there was talk of control. I'm elected by all the citizens of Morris, that's what we call it, you guys have a voice in, in my job. More so than a city council. That's the beauty of an elected position, you guys, citizens, control me in my office, not just a group of five people. Real quickly, as far as the property per dollar, I totally understand that. Kevin, you said it belongs to the taxpayers, it's, it's gonna remain property of the taxpayers, it's just gonna be utilized by us. That, that property is already purchased by taxpayer dollars and it didn't, in my mind, it doesn't make sense to make taxpayers purchase the same items a second time. You guys have concerns and rightly so, but like I said, I will meet with anybody that's interested when we're done here and ask any questions you have.
Thank you, Sheriff Dingman. I bring it back to the council, we have one minute, what do you wanna do?
I will make a motion to approve law enforcement services agreement with Stevens County as written.
I will second. We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Very quickly. Okay, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Felby?
Yes.
Waller?
No.
Golekin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Thank you, we have concluded our agenda, it is six o'clock, meeting is adjourned. Oof, that was cutting it close. Well, it's a lot of stuff to try to